Third item here, approval of the minutes from June 22nd, 2018. Any chance to read those?
Yes.
Yeah. I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the June 22nd meeting as written.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the meeting, the minutes from the last meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Passing unanimously, five zip. Okay. Communications Committee and Staff Report. Les, anything on, new on that?
Well, I'm glad to report that the new house building has taken an upturn from the slow start we took early in the year. Many of those were in the Prairie Creek neighborhood once we got the second, the third addition online, so Alex has new neighbors on the way.
Yep. Lot of dirt moving over there right now.
That's good. Good news. Okay. All right then. Move on to item number five. Which is, "Public hearing on an application for a special use request to allow the expansion of a post-secondary education facility in the I-1 Industrial District on property located at 715 East 13th Street, Andover, Kansas. Notes with the redevelopment of the Andover High School campus, Butler Community College will not have classroom space in the new building. Butler Community College desires to complete the conversion of the former Raytheon Building to classrooms and build a standalone building for additional classrooms and maintenance. Staff knows of no reason not to approve the special use to allow the expansion of the post-secondary education facility, conditioned on plating, pending the outcome of the public hearing." At this time, I called, we called the agenda number five. Is there anyone interested in the hearing? We have to lay out a few ground rules. It's important that you present any facts or views you have at this hearing so the summary can be made as a basis for the decision of the governing body. By state statutes, the governing body does not have to hold another public hearing on the matter, although they may listen to whom they wish. They may ask you questions, and in particular, you will be asked if you had a fair hearing, and whether there is any new information which is not heard at this hearing. The governing body will decide if the question of a fair hearing or new information warrants returning the case to the planning commission before consideration by the governing body." Obviously, it is to everyone's advantage if you present all the necessary information at this hearing. Les, do I need to continue on with any of that, or? Okay. Before we start, is there any disqualifications in regards to this?
Nope.
I now declare that we have a quorum of five present at this meeting. According to the secretary, a notice for this hearing was published in the Butler County Times Gazette on July 28th, 2018, and notices were mailed to the applicant and nine real property owners of record in the area of notification on July 24th, 2018. Unless there is evidence to the contrary from anyone present, I'll declare that proper notification has been given and order for the planning commission to hear the case. Les, can you give us a little bit of background on the case?
I think it had pretty well summarized it in the memo. The college would like to continue the expansion of classroom space, and in order to do that, they've got to move their maintenance department out of a portion of the building. And they own a 20-acre tract, but only a portion was zoned back in 2005 when this, when this process began. So this is just a, an effort to get their entire property zoned for their school.
Yeah. Okay. They're represented for the applicant. Please state your name and relation.
Good evening. My name is Vince Haynes. I'm with Gravity Works Architecture, representing the college tonight on this issue. We also have with us Dr. Kim Crowell and some board members present tonight. I think Les' memo really did kind of sum, sum it up. The college is remodeling and expanding into what is unoccupied education space in that existing building. They call it, it's called the 5,000 Building for the college at 715 West 13th Street. Their facilities group currently occupies that, and in bringing those, those classroom spaces and lab spaces from the 6,000 Building, which is the portion of the Andover High School that the college occupies, that does two things. One is it does push the, the facility's needs to be outside of those boundaries of that wall. Also, and the real reason for the special use permit is they'll be moving some education spaces, their manufacturing technologies, and those kind of education spaces that are in the 5,000 Building will be in the footprint with the facilities. So that's the education use that combines, that's combined with the facilities building on this 20 acres that's to the west of their current 20-acre spot, approximately 20 acre. So, yeah, I think that's really all, all we have. If there's more questions, there's myself or someone from the college that can, can address that.
Gentlemen, any questions?
No. I don't.
Thank you very much. At this time, is there anyone from the public would like to make a statement? No? This time, we'll close the public hearing. There are no further public comments. I hereby close the public hearing. There will be no further public comments unless the planning commission wishes to ask questions to clarify information. At this point, with us, any problems with this going ahead?
No.
No.
Don't see any at all.
If you've got room to do it, there's right zoning.
It's already in the middle of all I-1 industrial area.
Okay. At this point, we have to go through facts and findings. Gary, do you want to take the honors there?
Sure. Factors and findings. Number one, what are the existing uses and their character and conditions on the subject property and in the surrounding neighborhood?
I think everything around there is pretty much I-1.
Yeah.
I-1 and then beside agricultural, but...
So that's a yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Number two, what is the current zoning of the subject property and that of the surrounding neighborhood in relationship to the requested change? Just stated, I-1 and some agricultural near there, so.
That's better, yeah. But that's not the one that's going to change.
Yeah. No. Number three, is the length of time that the subject property has remained undeveloped or vacant as zoned a factor in the consideration?
Not applicable.
Not applicable. Number four, would the request correct an error in the application of these regulations? Staff has said no.
No.
No. Yeah, agree.
Number five, is the request caused by change or changing conditions in the area of the subject property, and if so, what is the nature and significance of such changed or changing conditions? Staff has said BCC is losing classroom space on the Andover High School campus.
Agree.
Agree.
Number six, do adequate sewer disposal and water supply and all other necessary public facilities, including street access, exist, or can they be provided to serve the uses that would be permitted on the subject property? Staff has commented, public water and adequate, public, public currently serve the existing building and are available to serve the additional building. The site is currently accessed from 13th Street only. The site has access to undeveloped sections of Yorktown Road and Commerce Street.
Agree.
Yes, agree.
Number seven, would the subject property need to be platted or replatted in lieu of dedications made for right-ofways, easement, access control, or building setback lines? Yes.
Yes.
The subject property needs to be platted. Number eight, would a screening plan be necessary for existing and/or potential uses of the subject property?
No.
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 No. Number nine, are suitable vacant lands or buildings available or not available for development that currently has the same zoning as is requested? That's not...
Yeah, agree.
Number 10, if the request is for business or industrial use, as are such uses needed to provide more services or employment opportunities?
Not applicable.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably in a...
Number 11, is the subject property suitable for the current zoning to which it has been restricted?
Yes.
Yes.
Agree.
Number 12, to what extent would removal of the restrictions, i.e. the removal of the zoning requests, detrimentally affect other property in the neighborhood? And staff has commented that increased activity and traffic, et cetera.
Yep.
Number 13, would the request be consistent with the purpose of the zoning district classification and the intent and purpose of these regulations?
Concur.
Yes, agree.
Number 14, is the request in conformance with the comprehensive plan, and does it further enhance the implementation of the plan? Staff has commented, the plan does not specifically reference BCC, but recognizes the importance education plays in the community.
Agree.
Agree with that.
Number 15, what is the nature of the support or opposition to the request? The staff has commented, none at this time. Number 16, are there any informational materials or recommendations available from knowledgeable persons or experts which would be helpful in its evaluation? Staff has commented, approval conditioned, only successful plating within one year.
Okay. Concur.
And number 17, by comparison, does the relative gain to the public health, safety, and general welfare outweigh the loss in property value or the hardship imposed upon the applicant by not approving the request?
This is always the tricky one.
It's better off approving.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
You answer a double.
So is it a no?
Yeah, is that yes or no then, Lynn?
We're all, we're all in agreement, we're just not sure if it's a yes or no.
It's really not meant to be a yes or no question.
But there's a yes and no there next to it.
This is a discussion question.
Yeah. And I think Lynn has brought it up that it's better to approve it.
Anybody want to make a motion at this time?
So then if we're approving, we're still approving with the condition of approved plating?
That's correct.
So what conditions do we want to comment on? Do we have five?
Five, yes. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Fourteen works, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Having considered the evidence of the hearing and the factors, we're going with the special use application. I think he moved that we recommend to the governing bodies that case number SU 2018-02 be approved for the establishment of a post-secondary education facility on property zone I-1 Industrial District. Items that support... Based on the findings of the finding information as recorded in the summary of this hearing and that the following conditions... Supporting items are five, six, eleven, and fourteen.
Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Let's see here. Closing remarks. This case will be forwarded to the governing body with the planning commission's recommendation and a written summary of the hearing for consideration at their regular meeting of September 11th, 2018, which begins at 7:00 PM in the council's meeting room in the city hall. Protest petitions against a change in zoning and/or special use but not directed at the planning commission's recommendations as such may be received by the city clerk for 14 days after tonight, i.e. September 4th, 2018, at 4:30 PM. If there are properly signed and notarized protest petitions with accurate legal descriptions from the owners of record of 20% or more of any real property proposed to be rezoned, or owners of record of 20% or more of the total real property within the official area of notification, both inside and outside the city, not counting public street right-ofways, then such a change shall not be passed except for by a three-fourth vote of all members of the governing body. We want to thank you. Okay, we got, they got anything else? Okay, we're moving on to item six. VA 2018-04. Public hearing on petition for vacation of complete access control to Lakeside Drive on properties located at 1607 North Lakeside Court, 1608 North Lakeside Drive, 1620 North Lakeside Drive, and 1612 North Shadow Rock Circle, Andover, Kansas. Comment, when the Shadow Rock addition was platted, access control was applied to all of the cul-de-sac lots that abutted the Collector Street, Lakeside Drive. The developer desires to vacate the access control to allow the corner lots of the cul-de-sacs Les, do you have any comments on this?
As you can see on the highlighted map that Lance provided, all of these lots are essentially corner lots on a cul-de-sac. Back when the subdivision was platted, there was concern for the number of potential driveways that would back out into Lakeside Drive, which is a Collector Street with a fairly high volume of traffic in built-out condition. So, all of the cul-de-sac lots were access controlled to access only the cul-de-sac. The applicant developer desires to get some relief from that access control in order to have driveways that would abut Lakeside Drive. We've had quite a lot of discussion about this amongst staff. We really don't, don't have a lot of opposition to this request so long as the, the garages face the cul-de-sac, so it would be a lesser chance of those cars backing out into Lakeside Further, the city engineer wanted to make it clear that only driveway access to the, the principal structure have access to Lakeside Drive, so that a person couldn't put a driveway into their backyard from Lakeside Drive also. But, but those few conditions were in support of the petition. I think that the petitioner is here tonight, he can explain his needs better than I.
At this time, I'll invite the petitioner to come up to the podium.
Craig Sharp. You just want me to explain what we're after?
Yeah, your address also, your location.
All right, 2131 North Collective Lane, Wichita 67206. The houses would still be facing the cul-de-sacs. What we get a demand for on these corner lots is to do a garage that sometimes, and I want to correct you, and I'm hoping you guys are still all right with this, sometimes that garage is still going to face, part of the garage would still face the Lakeside Avenue. We'd have two cars this way and one car the other way, but what it allows you to do is back out and then go back up forward to the cul-de-sac, either direction. You would be backing and pulling out of your driveway versus backing out onto the street, whether it's the cul-de-sac or whether it's Lakeside Drive, either one. So, the prime, I think the right terminology would be to put the primary driveway is still going to be on the cul-de-sacs, but the secondary loop would be to Lakeside for those that wanted them on those five lots. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
We have an L-shaped garage.
Right.
So we have doors here, we have doors here, and when we do that, people back out on their circle and pull out, rather than back all the way out, either direction they're
Craig, is that five or four lots?
Oh, I don't remember.
I see four.
It might have just been four.
And then it's the intention to just have a single, a single car driveway that backs onto Lakeside or like...
It'll probably be 20 foot wide, it'll probably be wide enough for two, usually when we do a circle, but there'd be some of them that we've done that are only single
Any other questions, gentlemen?
No.
I mean, my next question is, is this going to be, you know, street parking and then access for the lots that are facing the other direction that would be on the other side of that, to make sure that driveways aren't facing each other and lined up against each
The good thing about the circle drive is it's going to add a lot of onsite parking versus street parking also.
For those houses?
And there's not a lot of density there with four lots opposing the other lots on the other side, not near as much density as we have on a normal road.
He's got two to four, basically.
So then the, the two dri, I mean, it would be all connected into, to one drive from the act...
Oh, yeah, they're, they would be...
To the cul-de-sac.
They would be completely a circle drive, yes.
Okay.
And I'm not saying every one of them's going to do that, but we've had some interest in that on those lots, and the corner lots set up well for that.
Well, 1607 might be your fifth lot that you're... Oh, no, 1607's on...
That's number four.
Yeah, that's one of the four.
The one up towards the west, we did not want to do because that is where you're coming around the loop, and it would be a little more dangerous up there, but that's why we left that one off.
Just west of Shadow Rock Circle, right?
Right, right. We left that one off.
Yeah, because you can see that on the next, on the whole development.
No questions.
Any comments from the public at this time? No? Les, do we have to go through the facts and findings on this? Okay. Because we don't have those in our files.
I do have one question for Les. If we're, if they're doing loop driveways there, are there any special setbacks or anything that they're going to have to be aware of so that, you know, that loop isn't taking out the whole corner of a lot, it's just all driveway?
Yes, there are. We've had some conversations about that, and those will be applied at the time of a building permit.
Okay.
We have, we have driveway standards with setbacks from corners and so forth, separation.
Well, I drive this street every day coming from my house, and so I would prefer to have somebody meet me head-on than back out in front of me, so. Sounds like a good deal.
Okay. At the end of that, then?
The best I could do in 30 seconds to come up with a condition to fit what the applicant has requested is that the, the access be granted for loop driveways only with primary access to the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, obviously that would, that would already in there, yeah. But that's not going to stop the person from doing what he wants. But once he's tested, sometimes that might stop him actually.
We ready to make a motion on that, then?
If, I go ahead and make a motion that we approve this request as requested for the loop drives. Primary access to the cul-de-sac. Oh, yeah, well, yes, okay, yes, primary access to the cul-de-sac.
Second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Nay. Motion passes five zip. Thank you.
And this will also be heard by the city council at their meeting next Tuesday, August 28th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we have to recess the planning commission and convene the boarding of zoning appeals.
Make a motion that we recess the planning commission and convene... and convene the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second the motion.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, none. Motion passes, 5-0. Okay, item number seven. Number BZA-V 2018-03. Public hearing on an application filed by Robert J. Whitehead requesting a variance of 900 square feet from the required 600-square-foot maximum aggregate total floor area of all accessory structures for the purpose of constructing a 1,500-square-foot residential storage and poolhouse structure on property currently zoned R2, Single Family Residential District, and generally located at 1621 Lantern Lane Court, Andover, Kansas. The applicant desires to replace an existing portable storage shed with a combination poolhouse and storage building. Nearby neighbors have expressed concerns and mentioned conflicts with the Homeowners Association restrictive covenants. Wes, can you add anything?
This is, this is kind of, it's complicated to explain about accessory structures. Structure strictly for storage would be limited to 300 square feet in this zoning district, which then means that the size of an accessory building would be limited to 600 square feet with an aggregate total of all accessory structures of 1,000 square feet. So, in this case, the applicant is virtually combining two different uses in one building that he would be allowed 300 square feet each. It's kind of, it's hard to, hard to explain, but it's wrapping, wrapping. Correct. Correct. I have had some phone calls on this and I expected to hear from the Homeowners Association, but possibly they're here in the audience tonight.
Okay.
Correct. We do not enforce restrictive covenants.
Okay. They have a little bit of housekeeping here. Any disqualifications?
No.
Any ex parte communications?
No.
No.
Is the applicant present? Would you like to come up to the podium, please?
Sure.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Robert J. Whitehead. 1621 Lantern Lane Court, Andover, Kansas, 67002.
Okay. Any additional information you can add to this?
I think it's pretty well laid out in the application. We simply want to replace the temporary storage structure that we have behind our home and build a combination storage facility and poolhouse that's going to be the exact same matching structure to our home. It's not going to be a metal building. It's not going to be in an eyesore. It's going to perfectly match the, the, the design and structure of our house. We want something that's going to blend in well with the neighborhood. We're not going to park cars, you know, in the, in the structure or anything like that. It's going to be adjacent to our pool. And so, we just want, again, something that we can use as a storage facility and an outdoor living room-type poolhouse. We intend for it to be professionally constructed and aesthetically appealing and blend right in with the neighborhood.
Is it north on the backside of the pool?
Yes, the backside of the pool.
The, the north side, I can picture it. The north side of the pool or the west side of the pool?
Actually, it would be the west side of the pool. The house, the front of the house faces east. The back of the house faces west.
So, the big, the big lot behind your house is to the west?
That is correct.
Okay, I couldn't get it straight in my mind. Thanks.
So, it would be on the west side of the pool.
Okay. So, not exactly where the other ones are coming down from, correct?
Well, it would, yes. It would be exactly where the other one is setting and it would face the same direction except the current structure, the current temporary structure that's there is, I believe, 12 feet wide and 20 feet long. 12 feet running north and south, 20 feet running east and west. And the new structure would be 30 feet running east and west and 50 feet running north and south.
Okay, thank you.
There were no preliminary drawings of any kind to?
Yes, I submitted some, well, I submitted a footprint. And then I submitted a drawing that shows where the, the structure would be setting on the lot and all of the setbacks from the house and the property lines and the street, et cetera.
And then how's that going to work with the existing, like, fence structure?
Well, the existing fence structure will remain. Obviously, we'll have to take out a portion of the fence where the new structure's going to be, but it'll, the pool area will still remain completely fenced. So, we'll only take out a portion of the fence structure where the new building will, will replace part of that fence. But the back, the backyard where the pool is will still remain completely enclosed by fence structure.
So, Robert, you're gone from a 20 by 12 to a 30 by 15, correct?
30 by 50.
50. 50. Right.
And that was 50 north-south, right? Along the, essentially the length of the pool?
The 50 will run north-south. And the 25, excuse me, the 30, I'm sorry, the 30 will run east-west. Yes.
So, basically, it's running the entire length of your pool, your existing pool?
Pretty close. The pool is 18 by 36. The 36 runs, um-
North and south.
North and south. And the 18 runs east-west. But obviously, the concrete around the pool is larger than that and the, the structure won't, won't, is shorter than the existing concrete around the pool. Concrete around the pool is larger than the, what the structure's going to be. A large area of the backyard around the pool is concrete now.
That's a big addition.
And shingles, exterior, et cetera of the new building are going to be-
Match the house.
Match the house.
Everything will match the house. Siding, shingles, everything will match the house.
Pitch? Pitch?
Pitch, 412. And we're not making it a 30-foot sidewall, big, you know, eight-foot sidewalls, 412 pitch roof. Not something that's going to stick up, you know, real high and block anyone's view.
So, Robert, while your neighbor at the south at 1635, if they're in their pool and they look over towards your pool and they see the building, they're going to see one end of it that's 30 feet wide. What's going to be on that side? Is it just a full wall or?
Be a wall and there'll be a window in it.
Okay.
I would think that it would probably be more aesthetic than looking at Harry Street, which is becoming a higher traffic zone. So, I would think those people that are living to the south of me and looking back toward Harry Street, it would almost help kind of block some of that view of Harry Street as well as the noise.
And then what, what part of that is going to be storage and what part of that is outdoor living?
So, it's going to be split pretty much down the middle. Half of it's going to be storage and half of it's going to be outdoor living space. The, the north end is going to be storage and the south end is going to be the outdoor living room, poolhouse-type area as depicted in that drawing.
There going to be any excessive lighting? Robert? Excessive lighting at all? Night lighting?
No. There'll be interior lighting, but I don't plan to have any interior, any exterior excessive lighting, no.
So, is the entire building going to be enclosed, then? Because you mentioned outdoor living.
Yeah, well, you can see that there's a large opening on the southern half that's an outdoor living room. There's a 12-foot opening that'll have glass doors. Going into that, it'll still be enclosed. So, but we could, we'll have a large area that we can open to the pool when we're out there enjoying it and then close when we want to seal it off.
Is that close to the middle there, right by the end of the pool?
Yes. Yes, it has a 12-foot opening.
Yeah. So, looking down is less. Okay, that's what I'm just trying to get at. Get my bearings on this. Right.
And then what kind of access points for the storage? Is there going to be a garage door?
There's going to be a small garage door on the, on the backside, which would be on the west side at the north end.
Okay.
And you can, it's, it's on the drawing. There's also going to be a walk door back there and there's, then there's going to be a walk door going into the backyard. And it's just a door. My, my existing building has a, has a, basically, a double, double-opening door now just to get a lawnmower in is all that's for. It's not for cars or anything. Right there.
And then just a single door that faces the front?
Yeah, right there, that's, that's where the garage door's going to be, a small garage door just to get a lawn tractor in. And then that's the walk door. And then that's a walk door.
Now, to the right of that walk door is essentially the big patio door type thing.
Well- Right there is the big, the big opening for the patio doors, yes.
Right there, okay.
And that's the living area?
Yes, that's the living area.
So, the structure's not going to go past your existing house footprint on the north?
No, oh, Lord, no.
It's going to line up with the, kind of with your-
North edge?
With the north edge of the house?
Well, not even, it's-
It looks like it's pretty-
It doesn't even, well, on the north edge, yeah. It lines up, lines up exactly. It lines up exactly with the north edge of the house.
Right, that's, okay.
Yeah. And it doesn't go past the south edge. In fact, the south edge of the house sticks out much farther than the south edge of the proposed structure.
So, let's see, 50, 45, 750. Yeah, 750, 750.
1250.
Did you say 750?
Well, this is one of the larger lots in the subdivision with a, with an extremely large area of common, common ground behind it.
Point six, four acres, I see.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, any further questions for the applicant? At the moment?
No, not at the moment.
At this time, we thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
At this time, we welcome any public to come up and speak on the project. Okay. Are there any written communications or petitions? No. I don't think the applicant has a final comment unless something else has come up. Hearing no further comments, I hereby close the public portion of the hearing. There will be no further public comments unless the board wishes to ask questions to clarify information. The board will deliberate the request. We need to determine if the request is one of the instances under which the zoning regulations authorize us to grant a variance. That list, the items below are listed. Vary the applicable minimum lot area, lot width, and lot depth requirements to vary the applicable bulk regulations, including maximum height and lot coverage and minimum yard requirements to vary the dimensional provisions for permitted obstructions in required yards, including fences in Section 3103-F, to vary the applicable number of required off-street parking spaces and amount of off-street loading requirements for Article 5, to vary the applicable dimensional signs Section 102, 7102 regarding general standards and Section 7104 regarding district regulations. To vary the applicable requirements in Sections 10, 107(c)(1) through 5 above in conjunction with conditional use applications for non-conforming, non-residential structures and uses under provisions of Section 8-105. And finally, to vary the applicable provisions permitted by the floodplain management regulations. Based on the application, this request meets the criteria for which of the above?
Well, would it be six?
I'm sorry?
Would it be six?
I believe so. Combo with which one? Yeah, six here. Yeah, it's less than explained earlier. I think it gets a little confusing there.
Let's just sit there and just, let's discuss this.
Well, you're actually varying the bulk regulations. So, it's number two. Number two.
And not six.
Oh, okay. See what you mean, yeah. And lot coverage.
Are you saying that this request meets those requirements?
Correct.
That was one of my concerns, is having 10-foot walls or something like that. So, I'm glad to rate that.
Bill, do we need to discuss these right here? Specify conditions to be met?
You've actually got to go through all nine of those questions
before we go to this step here or after.
In order to grant a variance, you have to make positive findings on the last five.
Thanks, Gary.
Variance report, second page.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
All right, then, the variance report. Number one, the particular physical surroundings, shape, or topographical condition of the specific property involved would result in a practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship upon or for the owner, lessee, or occupant as distinguished from a- upon or for the owner, lessee, or occupant, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the provisions of these regulations were literally enforced. Because the 600-square-foot aggregate total of accessory structures allowed does not provide adequate space for both storage of outdoor and pool equipment and a covered pool slash lounge area. Number two, the request for variance is not based exclusively upon a desire of the owner, lessee, occupant, or applicant to make more money out of the property, because the applicant simply desires a building for storage of outdoor and pool equipment and a covered pool, lounge area. Three, the granting of the variance will not be materially detrimental or injurious to other property or improvements in the neighborhood in which the subject property is located. The proposed 1,500-square-foot structure could have an effect on nearby properties because it would be larger than any accessory structure in the neighborhood and as large as the main floor living area of many houses in the neighborhood. Four, the proposed variance will not impair an adequate supply of light or air to adjacent property, substantially increase congestion on public streets or roads, increase the danger of fire, endanger the public safety, or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood, because the large lot size would allow for adequate separation.
Les, is this wrong, Miss Gale?
That, I'm not sure.
Do you know?
I will tell you that I drew it, and I measured it, and I, I won't say it's 100% to scale, but it's very close.
What, are you thinking about proportion, Lynn?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I did a lot of research on this one, because it's very unusual. The living area, main floor living area of the house is 1,599 square feet, which is about what most of the houses are in the area.
But that doesn't count the garage, I'm just.
Doesn't, doesn't include the garage, main floor living area. I also looked around the neighborhood for accessory buildings. Most of the neighborhood has between 200 and 300-square-foot accessory buildings, I presume they're just storage buildings. There is one detached garage that's 720 square feet down the, down the street, a few, few lots from the subject property. So that, that led me to deliberate a lot about the first question and the next set of questions, is this unique? And, and I've gone back and forth in my mind, is this, is this unique or not? Certainly, the property isn't unique, it's a fairly typical residential lot. The use isn't necessarily unique in that several of the, of the properties in the neighborhood have swimming pools in their backyard, and they also have storage. But as I listened tonight to the applicant's presentation, I, I think what's come clear to me is what's unique about this is that he's combining his storage and his, his outdoor living space.
Yes. Yep. Yep. Even though they're just a little bit bigger than what I'd like, I just can't find you.
If you were to add the square footage to the main living area, is there any issues at that point, other than the storage? Were this attached to the house, we wouldn't be here discussing it tonight.
Do we need to go through those next five?
Mm-hmm. You want to take those, Gary?
Sure. Specified conditions to be met, the board may grant a variance upon specific written findings of facts based upon the particular evidence presented at the hearing, so that all five of the conditions required by KSA 12-759E have been met, which are listed below. If any of the conditions cannot be met, the conditions, condition or conditions needs to be reverted from a positive to a negative statement and the variance not granted. Number one, that the variance requested does not arise from such condition which is unique to the property in question, and which is not ordinarily found in the same zoning district, and is not created by an action or actions of the property owner or the applicant, because there are many similar houses and lots that have swimming pools. Number two, that granting of the variance.
Hold on.
Okay.
If I could, each of these has to have an affirmative.
Okay.
Answer, so if you'd like to discuss that uniqueness, that was, like I said, the one question that required a lot of.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Well, it's been stated that, you know, other houses in the neighborhood, and we can see on the aerial photography, there are other houses with swimming pools and outdoor buildings that are not attached to the house, or, you know, that are adjacent to their swimming pools, so.
I mean, the purpose is not unique.
No.
And needing storage and outdoor living.
No.
Think we're in agreement on that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so then are you saying that it's, what's unique about it is that it's a combination of? Storage.
Yes. Outdoor living.
Yes.
That's how I feel, yes.
Because remember, each one of these five questions has to be answered in the affirmative. Okay?
Yes.
I'm writing that down. Okay, number two, that granting of the variance will not adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners or residents, because the large lot size, size would allow for adequate separation.
Sure, and that's why I'm just concerned about the height of the wall.
Right.
So it's an, it's an affirmative on number two, correct?
What's that?
We're, are we in affirmative on number two? Or are we discussing?
Yes.
Okay. I am. I am.
Number three, that strict application of the provisions of this regulation from which a variance is requested will not constitute an unnecessary hardship upon the property owner represented in the application, because there are similar houses and lots that have swimming pools.
Okay, will not.
Constitute an unnecessary hardship.
Upon the property owner. Again, think that what's, what's unique here is that it's a combination.
Talking about the provisions of these regulations.
If you were to look at it just on the surface, it's a storage building that would be limited to 300 square feet. So again, unique.
In that it's a combination of, of buildings.
I don't know about that, though, because, I mean, if we just think of it on its own, I mean, is that, I mean, asking for a storage building at 750 square feet, I mean, that's what the question would be, right? I mean, compared to the provisions that allow 300 square feet.
That's another, one of the unique things about our accessory regulations, were this detached garage, it could be up to 600 square feet, one structure. Storage alone is limited to 300. It's much more complicated than it seems on the surface.
Yeah.
Unless if there were just a living space, are there any restrictions on the size of a living, detached living space?
Good point, Gary. Again, 600 square feet is the maximum size of any single structure with an aggregate total of double, six, so it'd be 600 square feet aggregate total.
Double to 300. And double to 300, it's 600?
Right, so if there was a 600-square-foot, call it a guest house, or, or outdoor pool house, it could be 600 square feet, but then there could be no other structures, accessory structures.
Or two 300s, either one.
Right.
Okay.
Right, right, right.
Okay.
Couldn't have a breezeway separating two. Then it would be connected to the house, and we wouldn't be having this conversation.
Okay, next.
We haven't answered it. I don't think we have, have we?
Have to double negative again.
Your comment is good, Alex, I, I don't know.
I mean. I mean, the question is, is, I mean, to make it a positive, it would be that the variance requested will constitute an unnecessary hardship upon the property owner. And does having, you know, 450 extra square feet, you know, that variance from 300?
More than.
Right, and just looking at one portion of it, but yeah, the total is 1,500. So, like Les said, I mean, the total natural structure without any additional oversight would be 600 square feet.
Combined, yeah.
Combined.
Right.
So if there are two separate structures with a gap between them, it'd be 300 and 300.
Right.
So is it an unnecessary hardship to limit him to just that 300 square foot, or 600 combined?
Well, I would want to go a little bit mad.
Well, he's having huge parties, and you can't cram everybody into 600 square.
He doesn't have to be here to do what you get ready to prove, you do that on its own.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
That's what I'm looking at. The only thing bothering me is the size, you know, I'd rather see a thousand, twelve hundred, you know, but, you know, but, 300, only 300 square feet, more than what I'm.
But that doesn't change. That doesn't change.
No, no, we still have to call it the same thing.
Yeah, still the same answer.
Yes.
Right.
Yep. What we're talking about here is essentially not approving. Will strict applications of the provisions of these regulations from which a variance is requested will not constitute an unnecessary hardship upon the property owner in this application? What they're saying is, why I agree with it is if we don't, or we require him to use the 300, 300, or 600. That's why I look at this.
Right, you're right on the point there, Lynn, it's, the question is, the 600-square-foot limitation and unnecessary hardship on the applicant.
So in just, I mean, thinking about the structure size being almost equal to the main house size, I mean, as a separate structure, the use and need between the idea of extending some ability of the house to extend out for living space, which wouldn't need any variance.
Well, again, then that's going back, talking about the house, you mentioned about the size.
Right.
Regardless of what we're talking about, we still have to go through these, answer them.
In the affirmative.
In affirmative, because we are not going to use the 600. Paul? So we still got to do this, then, then we want to adjust the size, we can discuss that after we go through all things.
Okay.
Clear as mud?
Yeah, I mean, I understand.
Yeah, I do too. I do too.
The question is, is being restricted to the 600 could cause a hardship.
Okay.
And I agree. Because of the size of the lot, and, you know, what they want to do and everything. And the reason why we did that is for people to contest before they went, and went over the 600, so we can discuss it here like we are now.
All right, then?
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
So, yes.
So do we need to rework, so number three again?
I think it would just state that it would create a hardship on the property owner.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, the strict application of these provisions would constitute a unnecessary, and unnecessary is probably a key word, hardship. Yeah. Okay? Yeah, I mean, yes.
Okay, number four, that the variance desired will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare, because the large lot size would allow for adequate separation.
And I want to emphasize on this part is, most of the time we approve things like this, it's been on acre lots.
Yes.
Also approve bigger buildings, so I, I think this one is on the borderline of being the biggest I want to approve for a point six acre lot.
Well, I think one advantage of this too is, I think one advantage to this, though, is that there is vacant land.
Yes.
To the.
Back behind it.
Back behind it, so.
And, and, what else?
I'm sorry, Lynn?
Because lot size will allow adequate separation. I agree.
Yes.
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 Number five, that granting the variance desired will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of these regulations, because the large lot size will allow for adequate separation.
Yes.
Agree. So now we go back to the deliberation part, where we.
We can discuss that.
Right. Yeah, appeals and board.
Okay.
Item number two, to vary the applicable bulk regulations, including maximum height and lot coverage and minimum yard requirements. Am I good to say, based on the application, this request meets the criteria for number two above pertaining to, again, bulk regulations, including maximum height and lot coverage and minimum yard requirements? and minimum yard requirements. To determine whether the evidence presented supports the conclusions of the required five findings, in fact, the board will not consider the criteria provided for evaluation of page two of the variance report. Each of the five statutory conditions under which a variance can be granted will be reviewed on page three of the variance report, and our findings of fact will be determined, which we've already, already accomplished that, correct? Having discussed and reached conclusions on our findings of fact on page three of the variance report, I call for a motion, and if granted, any conditions that might Want to try a motion on this?
I don't know, I think we, we have a little bit more discussion.
Okay.
Would we want to just decide? I mean, would we all, all please look at 1,500 versus a 1,200 versus a, you know?
I mean, to me, I think it's oversized. For the area, for the space, compared to the existing, you know, primary housing structures and then the accessory structure like this, and compared to anything else that's out there right now, to me, it just seems out of place, oversized for the, for the usage.
So what would you recommend is? What would be adequate in your mind?
At least 1,500, cut it down to 750 each.
Right, and at the same time, trying to make sure that it's somewhat symmetrical, you know, somewhat doable, rather than trying to cut it down and having odd shaped dimensions. I mean, I think, you know, having streamlined symmetrical dimensions like design makes sense, but the overall footprint of it, does that make sense?
I don't know that you're going to change the view, say, from the south, whether you, I mean, it's still going to look like a large structure.
Yeah.
Because all you're doing is shortening the length of it, but I can't imagine the width that, from east to west, that dimension is going to change a whole lot. I think it's the north-south dimension that would.
One of the things that helps support the size is, like we said, the open lot behind a lake and there's no going to be any close neighbors there at all, in the back. Now, you've got one on each side, but this doesn't interfere with that either.
So what I'm saying is, is if you're looking at it, it's not going to change elevation-wise, view-wise, other than perhaps some depth from the neighbor on the south, if you reduce it in the length of it. So I'm trying to figure where, you know, where the, the footage is coming off of.
Right.
As far as we look at each one, it'd be separately, you know, like, have you done this, how many years now? Each one has to be decided by itself. I just don't want us to approve this at this size and then have someone come in with a lot with somebody backed up to back, a moving up and different, and a slightly smaller locker and whole things like that, and still want to decide that building. So we have to...
Yeah.
Protect our, protect ourselves from decision making and, and that kind of stuff I'm going to walk, talk to the video, let's go, Sam.
You're fine.
I mean, you're, you should have... Can I ask the applicant another question?
I think it's permissible, yeah.
Robert, can you come back up to the podium?
Come back up, podium, please. I'm going to ask him.
Robert, just state your name again.
Robert J. Whitehead.
Okay, thank you. I do have one question.
Sure.
It may, may lead to more.
Okay.
Have any of your, have you talked to any of your neighbors about...
I've talked to all of my surrounding neighbors, and none of them have expressed any concern, and when I say surrounding neighbors, I've talked to the neighbors on the north and south side of me, the immediate north and south side of me, and I've talked to the neighbors directly across the street from me. In fact, before I left, a couple of them asked if they wanted me to, if, if I wanted them to come support me tonight, and I said I didn't think that was necessary, I wish now I would have brought them. So I would also say, I'm not sure unless you've driven out there, that you can appreciate the size of that common ground behind my house. It's, it's larger than my lot.
Oh, which you...
So, second thing that I wanted to add is, I'm presently paying over $200 a month for a 15 by 45 storage unit at Welch's Storage that I would like to eliminate. Now, one could say, well, you got too much stuff. Well, I probably do. Everybody does, so, you know, for what that's worth. So, other questions, I'm happy to answer.
My next question would be, how did you determine the size? Was it based on setbacks, or this is how much I can afford, or this, like you just said, this is how much I have in a storage facility and I need to bring it all?
Not really, I basically tried to proportionate to what I thought fit the best in that spot behind, behind the pool. And, I mean, part of it was the, the setback behind, you know, off of the lot, and, and I, I've tried to stay, I thought you had to stay 25 feet off of each of the property lines when I designed the size of the structure. I later found out that I could actually be closer to the property lines than that, and so I made sure when I was designing the size, that I stayed at least 25 feet off of each of those property lines. So that was one of the things that was a concern of mine. But I was trying, you know, when you, when you try to look at, you know, a, a good sized storage area plus kind of an outdoor, you know, living area, and, and then you go look at furniture to put in that, you know, you eat up 1,500 square feet very quickly, especially when you're going to use 750 for storage and 750 for outdoor living area, so, and again, if you look at the, the, the size of that common area behind our, our house, which our homeowners association is defunct, it's not even active anymore. I don't know if you're aware of that either. So we, we all maintain all the common ground, the property owners have to maintain that themselves. The homeowners association plays no role in maintaining any of that. So we, we mow it, we fertilize it, we water it, we take care of it all the way back to the lake. So the only thing you can't do is build on it, which I'm not building on it either. So you kind of treat it as, as if it was your own, other than building on it, and there's, there's no way there'll ever be another house built back there, there's...
Yeah.
Because there's no access to it, so...
Yeah, Robert, when I looked, when I was there, I looked at it, the, just off of Harry, there's a little tiny turn in, I can't turn, is that all that is, is just a little turnaround?
Yeah, now, once in a while, some of the property owners will drive a vehicle back there, you know, if they need to haul a lawnmower, fix a fence, bring a load of dirt, you know, but...
That's what it looked like.
As you can see, there's not a path worn in the grass, so it's very, very infrequently that somebody ever comes back there.
Yeah, and there's a lot of land back there.
There's a lot of land. And we, again, we pay out of our pocket to mow that, to fertilize it, to water it, to maintain it, because the homeowners association is defunct, and has been for years.
Les? In notation there, it says, some neighbors have expressed concerns. What, what were those?
I had a couple of phone calls that were concerned about the, the size.
I'm sorry?
If you could sit down?
Yes, I think. Thank you, Robert.
Sure, thank you.
And one mentioned that the covenants prohibited a structure that big. I don't have the covenants.
Okay.
Well, it, it's the funk anyway, so.
Well, I was trying to...
Yeah.
Reference you both parts of, both sides there, so...
Well, I'm ready to agree with you.
I am as well.
I think I agree with you.
With the situation and everything put together, the biggest thing I want to emphasize to you guys, since you're going to be down here longer than me, is, is we gotta, we gotta look at the whole picture when we do something like this, because if it wasn't for all that open space and all this and that, and the size of the lot, uh...
Yeah, it would look very, very crowded, and I can see the only person who might complain would be his neighbor to the south. But if he's, a, as Robert said, it's blocking some of the view to Harry Street, which, you know, protects his swimming pool.
It might be a plus.
Yeah, it could be a, a plus.
But I thought he mentioned, did he not get approval from them?
Yeah, he talked to that neighbor and said it was okay.
My issue would probably be more from the north, if it would block some of the view down from the north to the south.
And I think the person from the south would like to have, wouldn't want people looking into their swimming pool.
Right, but coming out of 1607 coming south, but...
Yeah. Well, and having built a shed, you know, I wish it was bigger.
Oh, yeah.
It seems like there's always room for things to expand, so...
Les, before a motion, is it appropriate to include, I, I certainly trust the homeowner, but I, I wouldn't mind there being something that says the things he said about the same materials, the shingles, the same physical appearance, that, that are things that are listed on this, is it appropriate for that to be a part?
Absolutely, absolutely, those conditions are your prerogative.
That would, that would seal it for me.
Okay.
Back to motion, gentlemen.
All right. Let's see if we can get this right, Lynn. Oh, you probably have it in here. Is this where I go with to grant a variance?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Having considered the evidence at the hearing and determined that the findings of fact in the variance report as amended have been found to exist that support all the five conditions set out in section 10-107D1 of the zoning regulations and KSA 12-759E of the state statutes, which are necessary for granting a variance, I, Eric Peterson, move that the chairperson be authorized to sign a resolution granting the variance for case number BZA-B-2018-03 as requested. Is it requested? Okay, as requested, subject to the conditions listed on the description of accessory structure that Robert Whitehead provided with his application.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes, five zip. Thank you, Robert.
Don't send discussion.
Good luck. All right, moving on. We need to adjourn the Board of Zoning Appeals and reconvene the Planning Commission.
Don't move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, five to zip. Item eight, review and accept the US 54400 in Yorktown final plat. Staff knows of no reason not to approve the plat.
Oh, wait. All right, one other statement. All right, I'm told this way.
They're out of a little space.
So just, I don't have a lot of portions to say, yeah.
Les, any additional information?
Well, we had this conversation at the subdivision committee, this is not the typical plat that you see day in and day out of a subdivision. This is a plat of a street right of way only. This has been a, a long, a long process with the owner and the city. As you can see, there's dedication of Highway 54 right of way on this plat, there's a dedication of a road that the, that the city feels is an important component to transportation in the area, and we, we've arrived on this alignment and access control, and we're ready to move ahead, and we'll, we'll expect to see a zoning case on some different land uses in the very near future adjacent to this road.
Oh, we got a stoplight.
Yeah.
Bill, you and I have seen this a couple of times.
Yeah, a couple different times. We'll get, give a couple of the guys here a little bit of time to look at it, and... Now, as Gary said, it's been two months, twice now we've looked at it and gone over different aspects of it. I think it's, everything's been worked out.
Is there anything we need to hear from the applicant, or their representatives?
Do you have anything that you'd like to add to it? Please, you're welcome to come up.
Since you sat there all evening waiting for this. Getting entertained and, and...
No, anybody from the public?
Do we have any back there?
Any questions, then, gentlemen?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we accept the US 54400 in Yorktown final plat as presented this evening.
I second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, five zip. Thank you very much. Gentlemen, good luck.
That's a necessity there.
Yeah.
Item number nine, member items, comments?
You guys done good.
It was interesting.
Yeah. Well, it seems like we spent a lot of time on the one case, but as was brought up, I mean, we need to discuss and make sure that we're doing the right things for every neighborhood as they come up, and each one is an individual case, and I, I think it's important that we do that.
That's exactly why I gave you those, those recommendations that weren't to the affirmative. It's to stimulate some thought that this is not, this is not the...
And I'll be honest with you, I thought those people were there to speak in opposition to it.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, and, and one of the things you have to think about is, what if, what if the neighbor next door who has a pool comes with the same request? What if every yard suddenly has 1,500 square feet of accessory building?
Yeah.
Well, and what bothers me is not so much that, is if somebody comes in with a .3 acre lot with a swimming pool, and he wants to build a 1,500 square feet, and that's why I want to emphasize that, you know...
The uniqueness of each property.
Huh?
The uniqueness of each property.
I'm actually was surprised it's only .6 of an acre, when I drove out there yesterday and looked, it's big, he has a lot of room.
Well...
Yes, there is.
And I've got a .9 acre lot, and, you know, and that little bit extra, it helps.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right then, have a motion to adjourn?
I made the motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn tonight's meeting, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, five zero. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.